Suitability of the parcel for use restricted by the current zoning. The current zoning does not allow multiple single-family homes to be constructed. So it would not allow that. It's a rural residential, so it'd be like one structure. And then they do have a few other, like farmhands and things of that nature. So the existing zoning does not allow for it. Suitability of the parcel for use is permitted by the proposed zoning. The proposed zoning allows the development of multiple single-family residential uses and multiple lots plotted. Detrimental effects? There are no detrimental effects anticipated. We, the proposed... Does it correct an err? No, there are no errors to be corrected on this. Length of time? This is again when the county went into zoning. It was an area that was zoned. Adequacy of the current condition and facilities? There are facilities available because of Foxwood and that area. The city and Johnson County will continue to work together on road... Hello? Okay, thank you. The city and county will continue to work together on road improvements. Long-range planning is to improve Ridgeview Road from 199th to 175th Street. I showed, I had a map there for you of the Johnson County Public Work Safety projects, which are future road projects from 2020 to 2040. The reason I put this in there is it's showing soon that 199th would be improved. And then it's showing the area, as you know, we put a roundabout. The city installed a roundabout at 199th and Ridgeview, and then the school districts. This has already been targeted by the county, knowing that the traffic is going to increase in the area. So plans are already being made, trying to stay ahead of any type of traffic. The city and county work together on the intersection of 191st and Ridgeview, and there's more improvements. The city's getting ready to improve Ridgeview, as you well know, because of the, it'll be 193rd turn lanes and all, because of the middle school. So there are plans already in place and actions being taken to help mitigate traffic problems. Public gain balanced by landowner hardship. The proposed use obviously will help support the area with commerce. The financial impact too will also help improve the road systems from the benefit of the collecting of the associated fees with the proposed use. As you know, we have excise tax and we have system development fees and things like that. Those fees will actually go towards helping improve the area, like a lot of times, excise tax is used for improving roads. Hardship? That issue would have to be better addressed by the applicant. Conforming with the comprehensive plan, as shown on the future land use, it identifies it as rural. We had talked about that as how, at that time, and you know, we're, our future land use, we're working on that, the comp plan. But it does conform with the general principles of the comp plan. Staff recommends approval of Z-55, 2021. Entertain any questions, please.
Should we, we have the traffic study here. Do you want to, should we bring up questions now about this?
If you'd like.
These are all kind of related together.
If you'd like to, that's fine.
We've got these different rezoning, but they're all kind of related to each other. So I really think we should talk about it a little bit.
To be clear, Commissioners, while you can ask questions here, each item will require a separate public hearing. And to the extent that the same issues should be addressed in other public hearings, while discussing them in one may shorten the need for some of the discussion in the others, they should be referenced. Because each public hearing has its own, is for the purpose of maintaining a record of what was discussed individually.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't, I don't want to waste anyone's time, but at the same time, if something is significant in another public hearing on the same evening, that matter should be addressed.
Thank you. Yeah, and in my opinion, these are all kind of related to each other, these different rezonings, because they're all next to each other right here. So I kind of want to bring up the traffic study.
Sure. So if, on this one, it is a straight R1 zoning, although the applicant has been gracious enough to give us their overall proposed use here and layout. What we looked at is, on this, is does that zoning, is that zoning compatible with the area? Now, during the plating process, obviously, traffic counts and studies and all will definitely be addressed in more detail. What, what we're looking at right now, is the area, is the R1 zoning compatible with the area?
Okay.
At this time, they're not asking for a preliminary plat at this hearing. So I will be more than happy to answer questions on general conditions of roads and what is in the planning stages.
Well, I mean, I don't have to ask the traffic study right now, but I mean, they're all related to each other, because it's...
That's correct.
They're all going to come out in the same area.
That's correct.
So...
Just wanted to make that clear, though.
Yeah, yeah, no, that...
That on this, this is not a planned district.
That's right. So the R, yeah. And another thing to be clear, too, is the R1, the lot size is actually bigger, right, than the planned?
That's correct.
Than the RP1, yeah. So I looked at the traffic study, because you know, I'm a statistician, so I like numbers. And one of the things I've noticed right away was with our, just our existing conditions on 191st and Ridgeview, it's already kind of warranted for a left turning lane. Is that correct? Existing conditions warrant a northbound left turning lane at 191st and Ridgeview.
At full buildout, that is correct. Existing conditions, no. Existing plus...
Just at PM, just PM, sorry.
That's correct.
Not AM, PM.
That's correct, yes.
So yeah, so the AM, just for the public, was traffic study between 7:00 AM and 8:00 AM was the AM study, correct, Mr. Burton?
Yes, that's correct.
And then it was 3:00 PM to 4:00 PM when the school gets out.
That's correct.
And so that's why there was a lot of warrant already for a northbound left turn lane at 191st and Ridgeview.
Yes.
Okay. Just making sure that's clear.
Yes, and that, as you know, when they did this, the school isn't completed yet. But all the studies are looked at and combined into all the different traffic patterns and all. And yes, a warrant of that, and that is part of an overall plan to improve Ridgeview. The first step is we're making a right-hand turn or a turn lane at 193rd?
Yeah, 193rd.
Right. And then we did some improvements to that intersection at 191st and Ridgeview, and we already are planning to do more improvements to that. Didn't even, just because of the school.
No, and that's good, too. Yeah, yeah, because you did put, it was a really tight corner.
That's correct.
You made it sweet.
Ditches.
It's not like you're going to go off in a ditch.
It's not, right. It's not perfect yet, because it's a very deep ditch there. In our timeframe, that, and the county assisted us in that, or we worked together, let me put it that way. In our timeframe, we were trying to get that all going and all. At that time, it looked like the school might be online quicker. So we're, we're already planning to do additional work at that intersection.
And...
It did help.
Yeah, and just to clarify, the traffic study is based on the, like Mr. Burton said, the proposed development that's going to go in there. So I brought it up now, because this is part, it's kind of part of that area where they're going to go, go out and there's going to be a lot of traffic. Now, when the, when that development is done, the existing plus the development definitely warrants a left turning lane there, both AM and PM.
That is correct. And, and as, as you can see, at this time, with all the traffic that, and you put in a few turn lanes, and it still didn't warrant a signalization of that intersection. Now, obviously, we'll keep good count of that and keep track of that. The Public Works Department, along with Community Development, will monitor those areas. And we're already looking at it, trying to improve it for buses and things of that nature. And, but as far as the signal, at that intersection, it does not warrant it yet.
Okay.
As you can see on, on the ending page...
I'll bring up more questions, probably in the other zoning.
Okay.
And more...
Be more than happy to answer anything.
Does any, I'm sure there's other questions for Mr. Burton or not.
I think the only question I have is, is it, how many different, how many of the different projects are considered in that traffic study?
All, it, it says in there, it says your house is in the duplexes, that's correct. It's, it's full, and it's at full buildout.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, good point.
There's a, well, to let you know on that, there is, there's like 49 duplex, yeah, there's 249 single families that were considered in this and 42 duplexes. And remember, we, this, the zoning, we saw it plating, so this is all proposed at this time.
Right. Okay, I realize I was ahead of the urge, I just wanted to ask if you'd like to point out some things.
That's not a problem at all. And we submitted everything to you, so that you would have the information and so...
Yep.
Any additional questions, Mr. Burton?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Nobody else have any? Now, the next step is the applicant's welcome that come up and say a few words or present, whatever you want to do.
Hi, I'm Travis Grif with Summit Homes. We have a presentation that's more related to the preliminary plat later on in the agenda. So it's just a video that shows a site, so we had more to add at that application.
Excellent, yeah, that's good. Now, the public is signed up for this, and you're welcome to come up at this point. We always encourage the public to come and speak. Now, there's some people that here every week, or every month, we don't meet every week, thank God. But there, there are people that are very involved in the community and come every month. It's a good way to get involved and to be a good citizen here in Spring Hill. The first woman up here, if you would like to come up, I guess I should ask, out of everybody on here, Michelle Burns is first, would you like to come up? And I'm going to have to limit five minutes, but you're welcome to come up now if you want.
Yeah. Hi, my name is Michelle Burns. I'm an attorney and I represent some of the property owners surrounding the property that is proposed for rezoning. I'm going to start my presentation, and I've got a handout. I've got a hand. I don't know how, you guys want me to do it just to pass it around?
Oh, yeah, you can, Amy will hand it.
Keep that one for me, I'll share. Oh, I have an, I have more. Okay, so our initial objection to this rezoning is lack of proper notice pursuant to Kansas statutes and the Spring Hill coordinances regarding that. Rezoning requires usually a meeting, pre-application meeting, we don't know if that happened or not, or was waived by the planner. And apparently, that meeting, the planner is supposed to determine whether a neighborhood meeting should be held. No neighborhood meeting was held in this case, so we assume the city planner determined that that was not necessary, which leaves obviously the surrounding property owners kind of, you know, without knowledge as to even what this is about. The first page of what I have submitted to you was, is a copy of the letter that was mailed out by the city of Spring Hill on October 1st to the surrounding property owners. And it just refers to public hearing notice, Foxwood subdivision rezoning and preliminary plat, and has the plat application number, which the preliminary plat is on the agenda, it's Agenda Item 11 for tonight.
Right.
And then it has rezoning RR to R1 from RP1 and RP2, which is not what the applications are for. And then the address is in the vicinity, and then a public notice, including the legal description, will be published in the Miami County Republic on October 6th. And then I've got a copy of the Miami County Republic, and I have a blown-up copy for myself, and I forgot my readers, so it shows...
The microphone is a little loud, I can't hear you in the back.
Oh, I'm sorry. The publications are for, this is just strong. Are for three different rezonings of the 80-acre tract, which is a bit hard to tell what they are, because it just says, real property notice is given for the hearing tonight regard to the application for rezoning hearing. And then it describes a 40-acre tract, approximately a 30-acre tract, and then a 10-acre tract, which would make up the 80 acres, but it doesn't identify the applicant, which tract, what the application numbers were. It wasn't until the agenda came out yesterday afternoon that we even knew that there were three separate rezoning applications and a preliminary plat application. Pursuant to the Spring Hill City ordinance, Section 17364, the newspaper, the city will publish in a newspaper, not less than 20 days, and supposed to provide enough information for the public to know what's going to be heard. It also requires that the city mail a notice to the requisite number of property owners in the area 20 days prior to the hearing. The zoning administrator shall mail to all parties described, excuse me, a copy of the published notice of hearing. That was not sent. I understand that the statute doesn't require that, but the city can make the requirements more strict than KSA 12, what is it, 757? And so the letter that went out should have enclosed a copy of the published notice of hearing. Then you'll see attached the notice signs. Your ordinance provides that these should be placed by the applicant, provided by the city clerk. They need to be at least two signs if it's fronting two major streets, or if it's more than five acres. It shall be a minimum of two feet above ground, and, and the place that can be seen comes from the actual state statute. This morning, I stopped by City Hall, and on my way back toward Dulutha, I stopped and I saw two notice postings. The first one shows rezoning RR to M1, and this was about 200 feet south of where 183rd And then the next one shows rezoning RR to R1, and that was right about at 183rd and Ridgeview. And meeting with Amy, and I apologize, I didn't get her last, didn't retain that, you know, she told me that the city actually went out and posted these signs, and that the signs were supposed to have everything on them, each rezoning, each the preliminary plat. And obviously, that did not happen. The last picture of the rezoning sign is the one that was taken by one of the neighboring property owners before they actually moved it a little closer to the street and up so it could be seen, because it was down and could not be seen from the road. So I don't believe that this is proper notice. I think this meeting should, hearing should be continued and that proper notice should be given. We became aware last night of at least one person on the list of people to be notified, never got notification. You guys don't send them out certified mail, and it's my understanding from Amy that she keeps everything that got returned. But that doesn't confirm that everything was sent. And this one particular individual would have gotten this notice at his law office, and he would usually get his mail, and I wasn't able to get a copy of any of the returned envelopes as of yet. So I think there are some serious issues with the notice for, and I will tell you this, Agenda Item 3, 4, 5, and 11, because it relates to them all. And I'm not going to hit very much on the golden criteria, other people will do that. But Mr. Burton seemed to indicate that a preliminary plat wasn't on the agenda for tonight, which of course it is. And just in terms of the comprehensive plan and the surrounding uses, it's pretty much all rural residential, with the exception of one small R1 zoning. The current zoning allows for two-acre lots. R1 zoning allows for lots a quarter of an acre or less. That's a lot where everything around you, with the exception of one small subdivision, is rural residential, and that's what the future land use map shows, that's what the comprehensive plan shows. And just to kind of wrap up, on the comprehensive plan, it has a Spring Hill statement of image and identity. To tastefully and uniquely blend the new with the old and create a logical and well-balanced commercial and residential developments, maintain a colorful and natural appearance, and responsibly use and preserve the city's natural resources and environment. And a R1 zoning with quarter-acre lots is not at all compatible with the surrounding uses or the comprehensive plan or the future land use map.
Thank you. Look at that. The next person is Tim Dowd, who signed up.
I still want to go. Please make some be ordered.
Yeah, absolutely. It doesn't matter when you come up, as long as you're signed up.
To be clear, even if you're not signed up, if you're a member of the public attending this meeting, this is a public hearing, you're entitled to speak at the hearing, even if you have not signed up ahead of time. The city ordinarily will call individuals who have signed up ahead of time, because they have indicated their desire to speak. First, but any individual and any member of the public, whether an adjacent property owner, literally or as defined within the zoning regulations or the statutes of the state of Kansas, may speak at the hearing. And we would simply ask, when you come up for public comment, please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
All right, I think the technology's working. I may need a little more than five minutes, that's okay. My wife signed up after me, so I might take some of her time. So my name is Charles Morse, I live at 18460 South Ridgeview Road. I share a 1,320-foot border with this property, so I'm on the 20 acres to the north of this. I've lived there for 11 years. I lived there because of K&amp;M Barbecue. I was passing that property one day on the way to get barbecue and saw it was for sale, and that was 11 years ago, and the rest is history. So it's been, it's been good so far, hope to keep it that way. So I'm just going to go through, so I Googled, I Googled the word ranch, Kansas ranch, and this is one of the images that comes up in Google, and that's kind of what I see when I imagine a ranch, very bucolic, very rural, sunflowers in there. But this is the reality of what Foxwood Ranch is trying to develop. And I know we're talking right now specific to the R1 section, but it really is all, you know, one effort here. So I've got pictures of some of the smaller designs that are intended to back up against my property, so 20 of those, 50 feet from my house. And this is, this is the back of the existing Foxwood Ranch South subdivision, so I jokingly call it Knoxweed Ranch. And really, not much ranch about it. And this is the esteemed applicant that Mr. Burton referred to, they have one and two-star reviews on the Better Business Bureau, Yelp, and Angie's List, you guys can look that up yourself. I wanted to start, though, with the history of this property, I don't know how many of you guys are familiar with it. So to the west of my property is the Enzer Park and Museum, maybe you guys have been there. This property, which is the 120 acres, I forgot my pointer, oh, well. So it's the 40 acres to the north, and it's the 80 acres we're talking about now. That was all purchased as one, in one tract in 1907 by the Enzer family. And today, that's, the 40-acre tract, it's on the National Register of Historic Places, the original home there, which was built and started in the 1890s. But in 1971, all of that property, all 120 acres, was deeded to Johnson County for use as a park and museum. And here's a copy of that deed. And this is relevant, because it has, has to do with the history of the property and what the original intent was. But it essentially, Loretta Enzer deeded it to the county in '71 to be a park and museum, or a historical site or other similar purposes for the use and enjoyment of the public. Should the grantee of the real estate herein described and conveyed over cease to use it as a museum or historic site, title shall pass to the Agricultural Hall of Fame and National Center for the Use and Benefit of the People of the State of Kansas. So the intent behind this property was always preservation. And for better or worse, my house in 1975 was put 50 feet, it's on a 10-acre lot, it was put 50 feet from that property line. And I think it was because, four years earlier, it had been deeded to the county, it would always be a park, right, and a historic site. But obviously, times change. So in 1971... So in 1989, the deed was returned to Loretta Enzer by Johnson County. I, I looked up the Board of County Commissioners Act, or I don't know the term, but that they passed to return it to her. And basically they were having a dispute over the preservation of the home and the property. And so she deeded it instead in 1990, one, one, one year before she died to Ralph Bane, who was the farmer that was leasing it from her, for $1. And she did that, I think, to protect it from the county and to keep it as rural agricultural land. Ralph Bane, you know, dutifully and respectfully farmed that land for the next 27 years until he passed away. And now you fast forward to today, which is the reason we're here. It's, the land is proposed to be sold to a Warren Buffett developer with, you know, completely disrespecting our local history and the rezoning proposal that is completely and totally out of sync with our rural community. And, and honestly, it's a plan that, you know, would make the Enzer family, you know, roll over in their grave because this is the very opposite. I mean, they probably couldn't even, even imagined homes on 40 foot lots, but this is the opposite of what they had wanted to see happen to their property. And if you guys want to read about the history, there's the URL right there. Okay, so let's talk about existing zoning. Mr. Burton kind of glossed over and, and kind of took a small picture of you too, but the, the only R1 district that adjoins that property today is the existing developer's property. Which is to the south there. And then, and then my neighbors to the south along Ridgeview, those are all rural properties or, or rural or residential low density. So all that green everywhere you guys can see, there's no dense residential development anywhere up and down Ridgeview today. And so it's completely incompatible with the character of the area and the existing homes. So here I mapped out from 175th to 191st Street, every home that, that has a driveway onto Ridgeview, so these are all of my neighbors. And so there are in total 25 residences in that two mile stretch on both sides of the road. And we have 12 on the, on the west, 13 on the east. Sycamore Springs, which is on the northwest corner of Ridgeview and 183rd. Oh, thank you very much. There's 25, I'm sorry, 24 homes there. See if I can point, oh, it doesn't show on the screen. It's useless. Okay. But there's 24 homes there where the red 24 is, and there's 30 homes in what's called Wolf Creek West.
Or she has.
You have one?
Is it working?
That's all right. Well, I'll be descriptive. As best I can. There's some anti-laser technology in the frame for your safety, I think. So anyway, so 24 houses in Sycamore Springs and on the east side, there's 30 homes in the Wolf Creek West subdivision. But, but the one thing that all 79 of these residences share is every single one of these nearly 80 homes are on one plus acre lots, up to 10 acre lots. So there are no single family homes, no duplexes, no RP1, RP2 zoning or developments anywhere in this two mile stretch. So, and, and this is very different from where their other new home developments for Spring Hill are located. Most of those developments are away from existing residential. So one example of that is just south of us, so south of 191st all the way to 207th, another two mile stretch. Where the Wolf Creek neighborhood is and the Wolf Creek Elementary School, there's only one existing home versus 25. So, you know, very, very little potential for conflict there. And then the majority of the homes that are there are, are in the south side of 199th with, where there's very little traffic. So I don't know how often you guys travel Ridgeview from 175th to 191st, but it's, it's very busy, especially during peak hours. So the density of this development is going to be, you know, very disruptive. It's very incompatible with the other homes, but also it'll have a significant impact on traffic conditions as well. And again, your other developments in this community, Wolf Creek, Brookwood Farms, Boulder Springs, Dayton Creek, even Foxwood Ranch South on 191st, those are all well away from existing residences. And if you look at the map, you'll see that. So this one is kind of a bridge too far because it's right in the middle of a lot of established, you know, residents and properties that are over one, one acre in size. So completely incompatible. And as Michelle mentioned in, in the, in the vision map for the comprehensive plan of Spring Hill, this Ridgeview corridor is identified as rural. And, and, and I know that it's easy to gloss over that and say, well, that's not set in stone. And that's just guidance, just general guidance. I actually think this has good foresight because of all the homes that are on that corridor and the rural nature and of our community. And, and it also shows on this plan, the, the R1 development going where it should, which is away from existing homes and properties. So 191st woodland up and down, that makes sense because, because there's no traffic over there and there's, there's very few existing residences and rural properties and estate homes. So it makes sense there. More guiding principles, but that you must respect the historical patterns, the precedence and the boundary of Spring Hill, the development of land must respect the natural environment and retain its natural and visual character derived from the topography, woodlands and corridors. And it, there's also a comment even here about reducing dependence on the automobile. I'm curious what this division does to reduce dependence on the automobile. But I'll, I'll talk about the bicyclists on Ridgeview in a moment. My neighbors hate them, but I will admit tonight, I actually, we ride on, on Ridgeview our bikes. Don't, don't flame me later. This one is really key, which is the transition of urban residential development adjacent to rural, rural lot, large properties. And that's exactly the scenario here, which is my property to the north is 20 acres, 10 plus 10. The folk property to the south is 10 acres. And it, and it says explicitly, when planning and designing a neighborhood with urban sized lots adjacent to large lot rural areas, conflict should be minimized through the development layout, lot sizes, density landscaping, and other appropriate design elements. And existing and natural features should be preserved and incorporated as transitional buffers. There's, I know we're not looking at the plan right now, but this plan has zero concessions, zero sensitivity to the, to the adjacent properties. And, and there's nothing in their design that would, that would indicate that this is in a rural area or that it's a, has ranch on the sign out front. I, I put this up because there's an existing creek on the northeast 20 acres that feeds from south to north into my property. And on the plan, the creek mysteriously is gone. I mean, it just disappears and there's a, there's a culvert on my property where the creek runs into and it goes under my machine road and into my woods and it's just a muddy banked creek. But I'm very curious in this plan, what the stormwater plan is, because we've seen nothing related to stormwater retention or detention or quality. And frankly, I'm concerned that, because the elevation of that lot is above my house and above my property, I'm very concerned that they're going to just channel it all into this, this tiny creek, which is going to pretty much wash away the culvert and my machine road and cause all kinds of issues. And, and, and you can also see this doesn't respect the natural topography and the existing corridor of the stream there. This, this plan is exclusive to put as many homes, as many properties on every square inch of rural acreage as possible. That's, that's its only goal. So a couple of the golden characteristics, and I'll go quickly through these. But a, as you guys read them, I think you'll agree that it's completely out of character with a neighborhood, 100% inconsistent because there, there are no single family homes on small lots, let alone duplexes, let alone homes on 40 foot wide lots that are two stories high. There's nothing like that in our area. I mean, that should be, I don't know, in, in an urban core somewhere or public housing perhaps, but all the existing homes are over one acre, as I said. The zoning of nearby properties, we went through that and, and from the, from the Kansas criteria, it, it is completely incompatible and doesn't match the surrounding properties. The suitability of the property for the use to which it's been restricted, which is RUR, is perfectly suited for that. In fact, that's the ideal, which is to maintain the character of our neighborhood, to, to do a development that, that does have two acre lots. It would generate still significant property tax revenue and excise tax revenue for the city. And at the same time, it would completely blend with our established rural area and our rural corridor. And it would have very little impact on traffic. So there's, there's no impairment there to the landowner. I wanted to, I, I know we talked about this traffic study briefly, but I wanted to highlight a few things that were concerns for me in it. First of all, it was performed in 2020 at the start of the pandemic when traffic was arguably lighter. So I think it's using a, an artificially low baseline of traffic in their counts.
When was the traffic study done?
February of 2020.
You don't hear.
Oh, okay. It says on it. So I don't have it in front of me, but the, the, I'm sorry. Are you done?
They combined a lot of those in, you know, like the middle school and things like that. Those traffic counts and all are all combined into this traffic count. This count was actually September 2021.
Okay, okay. It's probably okay.
The, the documentation says February of 2020, says it in two places.
Okay.
In your packet. Yeah. So I'm just going from what it said.
I see what you're saying. February 6, 2020.
Yep.
Go ahead.
So that's, that's one concern, if that's the real date. If it's, if it's September this year, it's probably okay, if that's the real date. It also underestimates the duplexes. They admit that in the study, that they said that they, the guidelines they follow don't, don't provide models for duplexes, so they just undercounted them instead. It also assumes nine and a half trips per household, that's lower, slightly lower than the US average. But, but there are studies that show that active family households, households can generate twice as many daily trips. And a trip is basically, it's not necessarily you driving your car, it's every Amazon truck, FedEx delivery, DoorDash that comes to your house. So again, potentially underrepresenting the amount of traffic. And then the final thing is that I think those of you who live in the area know that there is considerable bicycle traffic along Ridgeview Road. My neighbors are well aware of it. And, but that has an impact on traffic flow. And there's, there's absolutely, there's no count of the cyclist traffic, which, I mean, you know, I, I think it should be included because it has a real, a real impact. And, and the point of all of that is that the city may need to improve that road and improve the, the intersection, whether it's a roundabout or a signal at 191st sooner than, than you're expecting. And you, you just need to have the information to know what the facts are. You know, going into this. So I'm almost done. Th- this is the plat, and I know, again, we'll get to it later, but that shows my house on the top of it, 50 feet from the property line. And it shows the folk residence to the south of it, little further from the property line, but still within spitting distance. And the, the, there, there are no meaningful buffer zones, there's no trees meant to propose, there's no meaningful green space, there is a 3.8 acre amenity area, but I think that's for the pool. And there's nothing that's, that's done in this proposal to blend with the surrounding properties and match the character of the Ridgeview corridor. So I, yeah, and, and, and no transition elements. So basically a before and after picture, this is my hack job at Photoshop, but it'll give you a sense of what it, what it will look like. So everywhere you, everywhere you look there, it's rural, it's homes, 25 homes up and down with driveways on Ridgeview. And all of a sudden you've got, you know, potentially 600 homes. That's the other thing, is that the traffic study assumes not a single home from the existing subdivision is going to exit or enter on Ridgeview. I, I think that's unrealistic. So anyway, but, but by, by their estimate, it'll be, you know, roughly 3,000 trips a day. And if that's low, it could be, you know, 5,000 or more in and out of there. So compatible development would be something in the existing district, so RUR, you know, homes on two acre lots, something similar to Sycamore Springs or Wolf Creek West. Those are lower density developments that, that would match the community, have no conflicts, minimize traffic impact. It would create diversity in the Spring Hill housing options. What I mean by that is I'm not really aware of any large lot communities that are being developed in the city of Spring Hill. There may be, you guys tell me, but seems like it would be something kind of different and, and unique to bring some different folks in. And it has the potential to generate similar property tax revenue. And that's, that's kind of a view of what, what compatible development would look like on this property. So in conclusion, and thank you for letting me run over, it's incompatible with the existing zoning and residences, it's inconsistent with our city's own comprehensive plan and guiding principles, it falls well short on the golden criteria. It underestimates the traffic, it completely ignores the history of the Enzer farm and, and the intent of that family who owned it for nearly 100 years. And there are alternatives, there are, there are alternatives here that should be more appropriate for this development. And, and I would encourage you to reject this and encourage the developer to come back with something that, that is more palatable and, and, and takes in, into account all of these, these elements. That's all I had.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now is there, there's more, wait, did you want to comment?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Burton has a comment to make in relationship to the information provided by Michelle Burns and review of same. Thank you, Ms. Burns.
Thank you. We would ask that the agenda be revised to remove 3, 4, 5, and 11. So we can do that right now?
It requires a motion.
Motion to.
First, before we move on, technically, first thing is we need a motion to close the public hearing that has been opened regarding this matter and.
Just close the public hearing regarding this matter, I'll close it.
Okay, and then you can have a motion to continue this and all other matters or remove those other matters from the agenda. Because you have opened this one, you need to continue this matter for the next, if you wish to adj, continue it to the next planning commission meeting, which is, would be my assumption. The other ones you may then remove from the agenda based on motion to amend the agenda. Does that make sense?
Continue. So the first item is we want continued motion to, uh, continuance for items 3, 4, 5.
No, just items 3.
Just 3.
So I'd like to move that we.
Wait, 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 wait.
I'm sorry.
No, that's all right, because we have a public hearing already started. We have to continue number 3.
But we had. I have a question, I'm sorry. We had public hearing open on 3 and 4. Can you not do those two?
No, just 3, just 3.
It's open right now.
They just rattled.
We didn't do 4 yet.
We didn't do 4 yet.
No, we need a motion to move.
I'm sorry, I thought we had 3 and 4.
Cancel 4, 4, 5, and 11.
My fault, I thought we had 3 and 4. Sorry.
To, to be clear, only item number 3, which was.
Right, I said I, it's my fault, I thought we had done 3 and 4.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, that's it. So first, there's a question on this, on item number 3, which is zoning application Z55-2021. And Mr. Burton's suggestion that the matter be continued to next month. Okay. Yes, and so that is the first matter before the commission.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we continue item number 3 till the next meeting.
Second. We have a motion seconded to continue the resign number 3 on our agenda to our next formal meeting. Start the voting on the left.
Aye.
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 Motion passes 8-0.
Sure to help with that. The next meeting is December 3rd.
Yep, the next meeting is December, Thursday, December 3rd.
And then I would like to make a motion to remove Agenda Items 4, 5, and 11 from the agenda.
Second.
Second. Okay, we have a motion then to amend the agenda to remove Items 4, 5, and 11 from the agenda as it stands. Start the voting on the left.
Aye.
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 Motion passes 8-0.
Okay, and as a suggestion, for, given the number of people who may have questions, I think without hopefully overstepping my bounds, I would suggest a, a brief recess for use of restroom facilities to answer any questions anybody has, or myself or Mr. Burton.
I think that's fine, so we just look at a motion.
I'd like to move that we adjourn for five minutes.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second to have a five minute adjournment.
Aye.
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 Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to clarify that. Now we're on.
Number six.
Number six. Preliminary plat application fifty twenty twenty-one, A E J Industrial Park. Mr. Burton, you have.
Okay, and to clear something up, just for matter of record, it's December second. It's the next meeting. So we have a preliminary plat fifty twenty twenty-one. It's for A E J Industrial Park. It's a one-lot thirty-one point eight acres. We've taken a look at, just previously, under the zoning, you approved the. Industrial. Mr. Jenkins has presented this. Now, originally, it looked that it was going to be divided into three lots, but it is a one-lot plat now. Do you have it, Amy? So the zoning district M one has no minimum lot size. The plat is required to have utility easements all the way around, which it does. Anytime we have a platted lot, well, it is a three-lot plat. Oh, it is a three-lot plat now. So I'm sorry, we are at a three-lot plat now. So anytime we have platted like to the south where we have an existing utility easement, we do not, we don't make them put a full twenty-foot because it's a utility easement on both sides there. So, but it does. Stormwater removal will be submitted with the plan with the street and site, each site plan. A traffic impact study may be required with each site plan. Sanitary sewers will need to be extended up through here. They are, it looks like there's a proposal on that preliminary plat of how the sanitary would run. Excise tax will be calculated and paid for before the recording of each final plat. The planning commission's actions will be approved, application approved with modifications, or table it and notify the applicant of such time or reject it. The staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat.
I would take any questions? Any questions? Don't have any?
Thank you.
Motion to recommend approval of preliminary plat application fifty twenty twenty-one for A E J Industrial Park.
Second. We have a motion seconded to approve the preliminary plat fifty twenty twenty-one, A E J Industrial Park. Start the voting on the left.
Aye.
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 Motion passes eight zero. The next item is the final platification fifty-one twenty twenty-one, Woodland Crossing Third Plat.
Thank you. So this is plat fifty-one twenty twenty-one. It's a proposed final plat for Woodland Crossings. It's a continuation of Woodland Crossings. This is a fourteen-acre site with a proposal of forty-nine lots. As you can see, we include the preliminary plat and it shows that this one would back up to Brookwood Farms. And, which is good with the stormwater drainage and all through there, that would all get improved. A lot of it with this plat. So the landscape plan has been shown, the overall landscape plan. This is, like I said, the third plat. It does comply to the future land use map. And is a single-family residential continues through there. Contains forty-nine lots. Separate drawings and profiles of the streets and all the areas are already being submitted to the city engineer. Staff verify that the persons named on the plat and that the taxes are paid. Adequate control of stormwater will be obviously, and is being submitted to the city engineer. Erosion control will be maintained per city standards. The refuge will be disposed of properly. House elevations and typical plot plans were submitted with the overall plating of it. And the park fees, if the trail system, there is a trail system in a portion of the, on the preliminary plat. But we always say that if the trail system or the park ground is not able to be utilized by the public, then they will have to pay the three hundred dollars per lot. And that's at the building permit stage. An improvement agreement is being drafted. It will be sent to the city engineer and the applicant. And all utilities are there, they're just extensions. As to review what was approved with the preliminary plat and the other phases of this, RP one, the minimum lot reduced from seventy-five to sixty. And that's in the guidelines of the planning principle guidelines and standards. And then also the reduction of the side yard from seven to five and the reduction for the rear from twenty-five to twenty and the front setbacks from thirty-five to twenty-five. What we're seeing actually on a lot of these that are coming in is, you know, they're meeting nine-foot sideyard setbacks. I mean, I know our code says seven, but they're meeting those requirements on the side yard anyway. This is exactly what has been approved in the other two phases. So the actions obviously recommend to, approval to the governing body, recommend denial and notify the applicant or table it to a specific date and notify that applicant. This will be on the first council meeting in December because there's only one council meeting in November. So it'll be on the first council meeting of December. Recommendation from staff is to approve.
Hey, I have a quick, just to refresh my memory on the code. I know here it said the minimum lot area is six thousand nine hundred square feet. Is there a minimum lot area in the code?
Well, there is a minimum lot area in the code. And we just put a, some of them are a little bigger, some of them are just a little smaller. That's a recommended lot area for a RP one. And with the planned district, just to refresh, we, there are some additional landscaping requirements that we checked prior to issuing the building permit. And.
Oh, so in the code it's six thousand nine hundred, you said, or what is, is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay, got you.
Question. I didn't remember when we did Brookwood Farms, that last plat, that there was a connecting street right off this.
Right, so, so what happened there was, the connecting street was there. The connecting street, though, was drawn three lots farther to the south. So engineering missed it when they were doing the calculations on it. So what, that has been readjusted to the preliminary plat. So we, you know, the preliminary plats both have been approved and all, and Brookwood Farms just did not connect up to it correctly. And it has been corrected.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't bring that back because, you know, it was a correction of an error. And it didn't affect lot count or anything. It just lined those back up. But you are correct, good catch. Matter of fact, I think we're just now getting ready to take Brookwood Farms to council because we held it up for the correction on that.
Any other questions?
Move to recommend approval of application plat fifty-one twenty twenty-one, final plat of Woodland Crossings Third Plat to the Spring Hill governing body, including conditions presented by staff.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion seconded to approve the final platification fifty-one twenty twenty-one, Woodland Crossing Third Plat as presented by staff. Start the voting on the left.
Aye.
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 Motion passes eight zero. The next item is the final platification fifty-two twenty twenty-one, Cummings Property Fourth Plat. Mr. Burton.
Thank you. This is Cummings Property, this is the final plat, or, yes, it is the final plat. This was part of a preliminary plat as shown off of the AMES mapping. It's an existing M one zoning. And the related application is plat twelve twenty twenty-one, which that would be the preliminary plat, as you can see. And it shows site location. It is exactly as the preliminary plat. It is, um, exactly as the preliminary plat. All the water detention and all is already, uh, in stormwater is, uh, the detention area is already in for this entire area here by Mr. Cummings. It's a, it's one, it's one piece of, of the original 107 acre tract. It's one lot, no, therefore there's no minimum lot dimensions that are required and setbacks and that. What controls your setbacks is your fire rating of your walls. So, um, if they want to go right to the property line, just a little extra information, then, you know, they could have to put in a four, four hour rated wall. Because at that time, you're actually protecting whatever could be built on the adjoining property. So, um, sanitary extensions, I believe those are already installed now. Street trees will need to be provided on that. It is subject to a 10 cents per square foot park impact fee. That will be, uh, paid at the building permit stage or before the final plat. A lot of them are just paying before the final plat now. Excise tax the same way. It will be paid before the final plat that goes on the council agenda. Uh, we're preparing the improvement agreement right now. Usually, as you know, I usually have those ready at this time. But with the, the, uh, change of legal council with the city, um, we're working through some of those now, so. Installation sidewalks also should be, um, a part of the site plan. So, um, recommendation is to approve final plat 52 2021 Cummings Property Fourth Plat.
Any questions?
If you have any questions on, you know, well, I'm, you know, if whatever we wrote or anything, just ask me.
Move that we recommend approval of final plat 52 dash 2021 Cummings Property Fourth Plat as presented by staff.
Second. We have a motion, it's been seconded to approve the final platification 52 2021 Cummings Property Fourth Plat as presented by staff. Start the voting on the left.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero. Next item is number nine, site plan application 53 2021 Cummings Trailer Storage.
Thank you. So this is a, the 11.85 acre one lot. That's in current M1 zoning, which does allow this type of use. 344 spaces is what is proposed. All the lot lines and right away, everything's been identified, all the structures. It, it shows where the proposed trailer parking and all would be. Exterior lighting, uh, we'll look at that again with the, um, building permit. If there's any question on that, I'll bring it to you like I did with A and M, or Medham, I'm sorry, products. Uh, all the consultants, utility providers have been notified, but this is pretty easy. There's not really much proposed use for utilities on this. Uh, it does conform to the Spring Hill zoning. Uh, the site regulations and, uh, construction sales service and storage with the M1 regulations. And then the property up there obviously is shown in the future land use permit as M1. The project is designed by a recognized and licensed engineer. And the impact of the area, so we were just talking about how many trucks and trailers that might be expected per day to go through there. What, what we're also in discussion, I, I have not spoke with applicant here, um, in the last few weeks or maybe even a month. But Jason, I also discussed a impact fee for each unit that comes in to help with the road. Any improvements on the road or maintenance on it. Uh, we'll have that discussion again prior to council. You know, we want to be fair about it, but yet luckily, the applicants and owners, they understand that, you know, there, there's going to be some impact to the street. So, and not that it, that's just extra information to let you know that they are working with us on something like that. So, staff recommends approval of, uh, site plan number 53 2021. Entertain any questions?
Mr. Burton, I know that you've asked, I've asked this question before and something that was probably like two years ago. The gravel, there was something about gravel in these places and ambulances and being able to get stretchers and different things, wasn't? Wasn't that a thing? And somebody, somebody was grandfathered at one point and we had new ones named.
Right, so, um, that was all by public safety, uh, as far as the fire department and all. The only thing that was requested on this was that, you know, and it, it has to be that the entrances through the right of way um, have to be hard surfaced, concrete actually, through the right of way. And then, uh, but there was, and I, I recontacted the fire department on it and they've changed reviewers, uh, so it was not a requirement. And, and on this, it, with gravel, it does help the stormwater runoff.
So are these going to be tractor trailers?
Yes.
In addition to the RV?
That's correct. This will be a different, it's a different area, but yes, you are correct. Yes.
And that, is it just strictly for parking or is it like overnight parking for the trucks?
No, there, there will be a few trucks that just, you know, they pull in and maybe their wife or someone picks them up and they go home and they come back and get it. Uh, if I say anything wrong, Jason, please let me know. But no, mostly it is just, they park the trailer when it's called for.
So we're not going to have like overnight parking for the truckers themselves?
No.
Sleep in there?
That's correct.
Okay.
So this is not covered parking?
Uh, no, sir.
And it's gravel as well?
That's correct.
How's the parking stall area delineated?
I was going to say, how are you going to identify the parking stall?
Right, so we talked about that and they're talking about flags or? Just the two dollies that come down and pick the trailer up and hold it. So the truck can pull out and back in.
But not the sinking around.
Be similar to what you see at Mobile Home Parks where they have just runners.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Sorry, I didn't know what that was.
Thank you. I know that, uh, and I know it's hard to swallow some of this, but you know, it's an industrial area. And there's a big demand for it on that. And, um, you know, the, it, it would be a good use of ground and taxes.
Oh yeah, it, it completely makes sense. It's just like when we did the rezoning for that other one. The first agenda item was, that's what that whole area is. Coming to Spring Hill Industrial Park, so.
Yep.
But wouldn't, I mean, as I drive some of the neighborhoods and even businesses, you see trailers parked. Wouldn't this be a good way to get those out?
Great.
I think it will be in that, um, they, you know, obviously they haven't started. I mean, they've talked to different places and all, but you have to get through the process and get it built and things like that. But it could be, yes.
I mean, because then they say, well, I have no place to park it, but then you say.
Yeah, you do.
Right.
I mean, isn't that?
If you remember a few years ago, we had that problem across from Dayton Creek. I don't know if you guys realize that.
Oh yeah.
Parking all kinds of them and they did move them and, but the gentleman was real nice. Said, I just have nowhere to park these, you know? And they wouldn't stay long unless they were stuck.
Now, this is a great business model.
So.
Motion to recommend approval for site plan application SP 53 2021 Cummings Trailer Storage as presented by staff.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, it's been seconded to approve the site plan application 53 2021 Cummings Trailer Storage as presented by staff. Start the voting on the left.
Aye.
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 Motion passes eight zero. The next item is the final platification 54 2021 Jackson Crest. Mr. Burton?
Thank you. So Jackson's, Jackson Crest, it's by TKT Properties. They took an area, um, and replanted it like what we've seen in some of the older areas. And as you can see, the old lot lines on there. And now you see the new lot lines. The old lot line is just about split it in half, the lots. And so they've gone to four lots there that, uh, will be built for, or there are lots for single family residents. Uh, one of the, uh, contributing factors is the first lot that is, um, actually south of lot one right there, the existing, is they had a, um, I don't know, it was a, a shed or something. So what they did, they, as you can see, they extended that lot to include the shed or the part of the garage. And then reworked, uh, the other four lots. All the utilities are there, it's, um, you know, it's, it's already on existing street, uh, so we've verified though, the taxes are paid. Construction refuge, park impact fee of $300 per lot will have to be collected on this because there is absolutely no, uh, park requirement. They'll pay the excise tax before governing body. We do not need a, a full blown, uh, improvement agreement because the improvements are there. So, uh, we'll do an improvement agreement for any type of, uh, ta, excise tax and things like that. It's a, you know, it's a good use for it. Try and revitalize some, the area and also correct a problem with the lot to the south, you know? We will also add, just like any single family, at plot plan time and building permit, we'll make sure that there's sidewalks installed.
You read my mind.
Ooh, that's.
Oh no. Recommended approval of plat 54 dash 2021 of Jackson Crest.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded to approve the, uh, final platification 54 2021 Jackson Crest as presented by staff. Start the voting on the left.
Aye.
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 Motion passes eight zero. The last item on our formal agenda is a site plan application 60 2021 LNJ Development. Mr. Burton?
Thank you. This is one that, um, it's by Angel, A, LNJ Development, Len Baker. This is the one that we brought up to you and showed you the structure and things like that. And now what we have is how it will sit on the property. So as you see the site location, you see the proposed plan. Now, one thing I do want to mention on this is that the right of way there is 100 feet. And in, in doing this, with the realignment of Webster, we felt like there wouldn't need that much right of way. So we've reduced it by, uh, 30 feet. And so some of the right of way was reduced on that. They're working with engineering on, on that part of it.
So instead of being 100 foot at 70 feet?
That's correct. So they're working with engineering on that, uh, to reduce some of that right of way. That engineering looked at, of course, you know, with all the realignment, and we are working on that. Some plans for realignment of Webster. There's not that much right of way necessary on that.
So is that, I'm sorry, is that 70 feet from the center line or is that 35 feet from the center line?
Center line.
35 feet each direction from the center?
No, it's 70, well, no, it's, it's, it's 35 feet from center line. It's total of 70 feet.
Right, I just, that's what I was trying to understand, making sure I understood the center line.
Yes.
The center line is Webster Street now.
Yes.
Now 35 feet to the north and 35 feet to the south instead of being 50.
Well, and, and I think to the south because that piece is still in county, if I remember right. I think it's a little different, so. And that's why, I, that's why engineering looked at it and said, you know, there isn't really any big problem on this.
So it's not truly 70 feet then?
It's propos, it is a 70 foot, but we, the county's the other side. So I don't, it's, it spells out as a 70, as a 100 foot total right of way through there. So now it'll just be 70.
But it's going to be 35 feet from the center.
The problem is, the other side is county.
That's why, that's why I'm saying is it, it, I'm trying to.
We don't have that right of way.
Okay, so, so we don't know whether it's really truly 70 feet?
It is, the county has that. The county actually has 50 over there.
Okay, so it's actually going to be 50 plus 35.
We have, we only have.
Changing it from 50 to 35 on the, on our side of the street.
That's correct.
Okay, so it's true, so at this point, it's going to be 85. 50 plus 35.
We will have 35. But yes, you are correct.
Okay, I'm just.
For all.
I'm just trying to understand what the entire.
Right, the entire right of way, if we, if we were to get permission from the county and all, then yes, the entire right of way would be 50 and 35, 85 foot.
Okay. I just was trying to understand exactly.
Or 80 foot, I'm sorry, 80 foot.
I do, I do want to make sure we're really clear, as we're talking about this. The city of Spring Hill would have, as Mr. Burton has said, 35 feet of right of way. And while the county would have 50 feet on the other side, that's not part of the city's right of way. And while it may be public right of way, it is not shared for our purposes. Unless it's a joint street development. There's no other public use for it for which the city could unilaterally, uh, act. And I want to be, I just want to make sure that that is crystal clear.
Well, if we annexed it, what would the, where do we be?
It would be 50 feet. It would be 70 feet total. The 50 foot on this county side. Now, I just want to let you know though, so that if someone says, oh, great, you know, the city does have an agreement with the county for patrolling that. Yes, police patrolling, because if someone sees it and says, oh, well, you know, they can't stop me, it's not in the city. We do have an agreement to patrol that and, and enforce law enforcement there, so.
That is good to know.
Okay, so the, uh, landscape plan is on there. It, uh, is conducive with everything. The only things that we really did talk about was, uh, there's plenty of parking, there's more parking than what is required. And the two entrances there, uh, the distance is just a little closer than necessa, or that is allowable. But engineering looked at it and said that it would work, especially with the realignment of Webster. So that's really about the only, um, comments that came back.
So what, how close are they versus how far are they supposed to be apart?
There's a 50, or a 30 foot difference on those.
You like 50 feet.
I know, I'm telling you. There's a 30 foot difference.
Okay. So they're actually how far apart then?
I don't know, to be honest with you, the engineering looked at it.
Okay.
So, um, well, this one doesn't say. I, I don't know Troy, to be honest with you, or Mr. Mitchell, I'm sorry.
He's the numbers person, I like to.
I, I understand, so.
He knows.
So there's 50. Well, engineering, I should have put that in the report, but we've been getting some of them after the reports. But, uh, there's 52 parking spaces handicapped. The code requires 36 and one, well, actually that's incorrect, is requires 36 and two. And then we tell how you, uh, the code, what the code is requirement for per thousand. Erosion control, um, Erosion control, um sewer is, there's a little sewer extension that has to come through off of the west side. They put, they extended it up to the existing building now, and then there's a manhole and they'll extend that. Water will be provided by the city, um, and all services are there. And staff recommends approval of site plan sixty twenty-one. Twenty-two-one, how about that? Thank you.
We should just say fifty-two-one.
So I guess my question is, and I brought this up last time, is doing a full curb and gutter along Webster between those two curb cuts. Why would we not do that at this point?
Well, I did, uh, what we're looking at, engineering is looking at that right now. To bring that on down to the south, or be southwest, actually. And that's part of the improvement part of it.
Because I mean, this is, this is kind of getting us into that corner where, you know, this is our one shot for this, this right-of-way, this portion of frontage. To get it done right.
That's correct, but what engineering's looking at is what extent of existing Webster will be worked on with the realignment of Webster.
Okay, and I understand what you're saying with that, and I went home and thought about this. If, if we were to do what he's saying and said, and I'm just pulling numbers.
Oh, yeah, no, that's fine.
Just pulling numbers. If it was gonna cost him, if we said, we want you to do the curb and gutter. And it was fifty thousand dollars.
Sure.
Can't we say, we wanted you to do curb and gutter and it's fifty thousand dollars? So give us the fifty thousand dollars and we're gonna apply that
To the.
To the, to the curb and gutter, street alignment, street servicing and all of that, and that will go into it when we do it.
Right, and that can be a decision, obviously, that can be presented to gu- the governing body at the time. The, it is slated right now to curb between those, like what we talked about. Uh, but engineer, like I said, engineers looking at it to see if it's even feasible or anything. Actually, the applicant loves it to a point because you're going to fill in and have a flat real nice lot, you know, because there is a ditch there.
Well, it is gonna make his place look incredible.
Right, and uh.
But you sure don't want to tear it up when you go to fix that road either.
Well, don't worry. So, but you are exactly right. That's why they're looking at it very closely to see, so we don't want to put something in and tear it back out.
Right, why do that?
Right. And, and obviously, like I said, the applicant, it's took, anytime you can fill in a ditch in front of a commercial business and have a nice flat lot, um, he's all for it. But I don't want to say, oh yeah, we're going to make them do it. And then like, like everyone's saying, and we're all in agreeance on this, and then tear it back out. You know, it just doesn't make sense.
And I completely understand that as well. Um, I know the district's really big on that too, with, you know, rails and.
Sure, sure. Well, sidewalks, you know.
Yeah, it's, it's, I, I completely understand that, but I don't want to miss the vote if the engineering comes back and says, oh yeah, we won't be touching this portion of Webster, and all of a sudden we have nothing there.
Right.
Right, no. And Dan, he's, he's a pretty, he's aware of it, pretty good. One thing is, you know, the trees are right on the slope.
Yeah.
And so really, the, and as you can see, they've pushed him up there, the applicant, he doesn't mind that at all. It actually adds great value to his property, so.
Well, we're learning as we go.
No, and we are. And the other thing on there is obviously sidewalks. And there will be no area to put sidewalks because of the slope unless it's filled in. And if it is, then we'll make sure that there's sidewalks at the building permit time. And we'll bring, once we get a decision, I was really hoping to have, and then we'll bring this back and just show you, hey, this is what the outcome was.
It'll be a curb and gutter either way, right? That's the outcome, whether it's.
That's correct, yeah, right, whether it's now or later.
Or gutter to sidewalks.
Yeah.
One thing that, one thing in that area is, we know on both sides is ditches. And that just is costly. You know, everyone knows that, and so they're looking to see if they can balance the site with, with uh the new road and things of that nature. So there's quite a big one, and, and there's a pond. You know, so. I'm just glad that I'm not engineering it.
Well, thank you.
I think, and, and just one more quick comment, you know, um, uh, Mr. Baker did tell us, you know, that, that there is a um tenant for both ends of it, you know. And I actually did talk to the donut guy, um, and then he's been in before and brought donuts, but I talked to him the other day and he, he's excited, he.
We're excited. Yeah, me and my kids.
Well, you should bring donuts to playing.
He will, he will, he's waiting on the vote.
He should have brought.
No, that's bribery, see?
Motion to recommend approval of site plan application SP sixty twenty-two-one for L N J Development as presented by staff.
Second.
We have a motion submitted seconded to approve the site plan application sixty twenty-two-one L N J Development as presented by staff. Start the voting on the left.
Aye.
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 Motion passes eight-zero.
Donuts in December.
Donut, December, donut, sorry.
And then, Mr. Burton, you have the floor for any discussion or.
Sure, uh, the final plat for Maplewood Valley uh did go through the council. Jim Tech, both final plat and site plan were approved. And the rezoning at uh, for L and J there at a hundred ninety-first and one sixty-nine, changing from uh C to M, it went through council as well. So um, we're seeing a lot more development, you know, obviously, everyone knows it and um, we're, there's actually quite a bit of infill that's taking place. Um, so we look for some of the infill down behind here to start taking place. You know, some of the areas that have not had anything. And believe it or not, that's really good for the areas. Um, it's funny, you get a new house sitting in there and then everybody paints and cleans and everything.
Absolutely.
So.
Domino.
Yeah, it is. Um, so other than that, that's about all I have. I've, uh, uh, this meeting, I realize it was a long agenda. Thank you for working with us on this, on doing that. Um, obviously, we will bring it back to you. Um, and then we're gonna try and not have such a heavy agenda, just all piled at one time on us. Uh, oh, real quick, QuickTrip, uh, they're getting ready, I don't know if they've picked up their permit yet. Okay, so they're getting ready to start and we'll do some blasting out there for the uh Santa Air Sewer Lift Station before too long. We want to get that done before they pour concrete, so. So that'll be good and that'll be uh recommended. Oh, I do want to let everyone know also on that. There was um some uh stumbling block with the state. And Mayor Ellis uh lobbied really, really hard, worked with a, uh several legislators and all. Um, and was able to s- straighten the ship, get, get it resolved and get going. And that was on the QuickTrip site, uh because all that state right-of-way through there and and it just kept going on and on and on and thought we were through it, and then at the last minute, they threw something else in there. So um, I do want to say, you know, Ms. Mayor Ellis did contact and, and um went through on that. So I'd, and just in case you hear something out there on what happened to QuickTrip, it delayed it for a little bit. So, but we're all, we're going now. Very good. Lots and lots of people talking about development in the one sixty-nine corridor area. I, I've, haven't really had a lot of time, you guys, to work on the comp plan. Um, I'll, I will send you some stuff out. And if I could get some comments back, I mean, if you guys have any comments, I don't care if you're, just write it down and throw it in at me or whatever. Um, that way I can get that ball rolling with getting a consultant and things like that, uh, or put it out for, you know, um, request bid, sure. And um, I just want to make sure on this one, excuse me. This is, the, the one that was discussed tonight on Rural Residential is a perfect example as to why we should and will, if I'm around, keep up with the comp plan.
Yeah.
I mean, it really is. As, as you noticed, I, and, and the truth of the matter is, you know, I used the comp plan for that zoning of Jensen's, that's what it's there for. And on this, as you noticed, they were using, or the neighborhood was using the comp plan. But, you know, the ci- the county really doesn't, you know, the comp plan for county is rule, here we go. Um, but this is a perfect example as to why we need to keep up on this and, and just the simple fact, you know, we have a lot of work ahead of us to get the comp plan back to what the vision is.
I think it's also important that we express that if Spring Hill doesn't do it, big boys from above, uh, up north will.
Sure.
They will come down and they will take over that area, and they will buy up that stuff, and the big cities will annex it and our small-town little world is not gonna be small-town little world anymore.
And not.
And none of the big cities are gonna put residential right there at the edge of their border and the edge of yours. They're gonna put their least desired property right there.
It'll be tilted.
So.
The statement that they used about our, and it was not small-town, big world, but.
About the comments that were made tonight? Okay, we, we shouldn't.
The small-town, the, our, our, our statement about, that's in the comp plan of s- our small-town and our historical.
Oh, okay, so if we talk about the comp plan, yes, you're correct. That was.
To be really clear, um, Mr. Burton has a really fine point, which was, can we, can the, can the commission engage in a discussion about the comments tonight i- uh, made in a, in the public hearing, which was continued? And the others that were removed? No. However, the commit- the commission can certainly discuss with Mr. Burton a- any meeting. And one of the very purposes for comment period is to discuss future issues related to.
So the comment to comp plan.
Yes.
About the, our.
Small-town, right.
Our small-town values or our star historical is not for the school district. It is meant for the city core, the city.
Right.
The city hub.
Sure.
And so I think that as we move forward at looking at the comp plan, we may need to consider that statement.
Oh, oh, well, because.
Does that make sense?
Sure, because if you look at it right now, you can tell when the comp plan was made. And, I mean, you drive out here to the glass plant and that was out of the city. This is a great place for this, it's out of our city.
Right.
Well, now, that's right, darn near in the middle, I mean, honestly, you know.
Right, that statement was leaning more towards the residential and the historic downtown area.
But I just wanted to make the point that this is a perfect example tonight
Yep.
as to why we really need the comp plan, we need to just keep it up, so. I appreciate it.
Yeah, and we have like doubled in size since all of that was looked at and, you know, a walking community was meant that it would be, go back more towards what we were when we had uh Ralph's I G A or whatever we had where Life Spring Church was at, and we could walk to the grocery store. We can't walk to Price Chopper unless we're living in Blackhawk.
Sure, so it, and um, it, it can be exciting, and that's how I take it on the comp plan and you know, it's a work, but, and I'll get going back on it. I just have been bombarded with a few duties that um, you know, took some time, but I definitely will get back.
I have another question for you.
Yes.
You don't have any darts over there?
I've got something, just.
Gosh dang it. Where are we at with my dumpsters?
I really don't know, so I'll be honest with you and tell you, I do not know. Um, we will check with Brandon though, and Brandon, eh, we get a lot of complaints, so we know he's doing a good job. The only thing I have left, oh, I mean, unless someone has a question or a comment or, uh, Mr. Dunley would like to uh, speak a little bit with you guys real quickly. Um, if he gets too winded about it, I'll say, hey, come on, man. Um, but this will be, this will not be uncommon. Uh, we'll have either Mr. Dunley or an associate. We just feel like that, uh, I feel like, that I think it's, we're at a point where, you know, I want to make sure that we do things correctly. Um, as you saw with my comments, I have a few more uh standards in there than is really needed, uh, quote by statute. But I also want to uh make sure that we do everything correctly. It doesn't matter if there is a petition or protest against it or for it or anything. If there's nobody here, I still want to make sure that we do it correctly. And so, and that was.
Public hearings is what you're talking about, right?
Anything, I mean, to be honest with you, just anything, because, you know, over the years, eh, you know, it kind of got loosey and goosey and all that.
Well, sometimes those have saved our hide.
Right, so.
More in there.
Sure. So Mr. Dunley or an associate will be here and then um, one more comment, I can't remember. Oh, on, on this other, we'll, we're gonna clean up some housekeeping on it and then we'll get it back to you. Well, thank you. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thanks, Mr. Burton.
Mr. Chair, uh, Planning Commission members, thank you, as obviously my name is F. Charles Dunley, Chuck Dunley, please. Uh, my full name is, is a little, uh, a little much for the, the descendants of former Irish boatpeople, but it sounds good. Um, and I'm very proud of it, um, but I'm also not that formal, eh, not as formal as it would eh, as it would tend to provide. Um, I will be attending uh Planning Commission meetings from now on or one of my, uh, one of my partners or associates, um, and Mr. Burton had specifically requested that. A quick history, uh, for those of you who not, who may not be aware of this. The city used to have, the city attorney attend Planning Commission meetings till two thousand eight, um, after the economic downturn of two thousand seven and two thousand eight, when there was virtually no development and every site plan just all of a sudden was completely dry. We're still, you're still reviewing and approving um site plans and other, and changes to site plan modifications that were originally adopted in two thousand six. Uh, that's obviously changing, and there's a great deal of development that's come. Um, when uh we provided a proposal to the city for services, and we also uh asked, uh, following those for input from mayor, from the, the uh governing body, from the outgoing city attorney, uh, and from um involved, uh, from the interim city administrator and from involved department heads and officers of the city, uh, what specific additional services were needed. This was one that was specifically pointed. Uh, and it was addressed within our contract with the city. So we'll be here to, to help out, hopefully not to, to be too overly officious, but to help out when um necessary. And you're always free to contact me if you have questions or you have an issue. All right, I'll try to see if I have enough cards for everybody, otherwise I'm, I'm easy to find. Uh, our law firm is McAnany Van Cleven Phillips, uh, which you can find as M V P Law. Um, and uh, we do a great deal of municipal legal work. Um, I have done municipal uh legal work, um, employment and civil rights litigation, which basically means defending primarily municipalities or employers. Um, municipalities and civil rights actions, um, from First Amendment to particularly law enforcement liability matters as well as Fifth Amendment land use takings and uh similar uh matters uh at the state level. Uh, I have been in-house and in the private sector uh for, and have done all, at one point was uh the s- senior attorney for the unified government, many, many years ago. Uh, responsible for the, all of their uh police litigation, which was a fair amount. Um, and then. Um, and then I was with Johnson County Government, um, handling all of Johnson County's employment, civil rights litigation for thirteen years until the private sector pulled me back. And I've been with McAnany for a little over five years. Uh, really enjoy the work, and this is part of the way that we provide public services, been a long part of, uh, my firm's history. Uh, since the firm's founding in nineteen oh one, it is the longest continuously operating firm with the same name, same operation and organizational structure uh, in the state of Kansas, and since nineteen oh one, we have represented municipalities in Kansas. Or other local governmental entities.
Where's the law, a law office located, or Lisa?
Uh, no, our, our law, our law office is now located, we used to have three in Kansas City area, now we are located at um, ten east Cambridge Circle Drive. Um, suite three hundred, um, in Kansas City, Kansas, and where that is, for all of you to know, we, we had an office in Fairway, Kansas City, Missouri, and downtown Kansas City, Kansas, this was it before I even went back. Consolidated all those, um, for those of you who aren't familiar, um, Cambridge Circle Drive is the last exit on thirty-five in Kansas. And it's seven blocks north of Johnson County, a block east of Jackson County, and seven blocks into Wyandotte County. We consolidated our Kansas City offices at that location. Um, although, at this time, we have everybody working everywhere, and I am elector of Johnson County. Uh, so. Any other, any questions, anything you need, please let me know. Sorry, I took some of the fun off tonight, too.
All right, I just had a couple comments, one, I forgot to tell you that the crossings off a hundred ninety-first, right next to the road tracks, had all the, uh, difficulties with in the past, they actually have, uh, permits that they're gonna start some duplexes in there. Uh, we, we, I don't know, forty permits or some, fifty permits, I'm sorry. So, um, that's, it looks like that is a reality. Um, and then the other thing is, is.
Go ahead.
Um, the other thing is, Mr. Dunley, eh, he is available at any time. The only thing that I ask is that we are trying to make sure that uh, we know what billings and all are coming in, that if you could contact myself or Ashley or Amy, and if it's a, you know, if it's a legal question that we will get billed for, eh, we don't have any problems with you talking with Mr. Dunley and all, it's just we're trying to keep control of what is being billed, or so that we know, okay? Uh, but I do welcome you to call him, if you would just give us a quick call and say, hey, I'm gonna call, uh, Mr. Dunley on something simple, or if you don't wanna tell us, just, I need, need to talk about this, uh, there's not any problem with it, we just are keeping good records on everything.
Yeah, and I should've been more clear about.
Oh, no, that, eh, that's fine, I just, and like I said, Planning Commission, that you, well, we welcome it. Any questions, you know, you feel like you have a question, or you have a comment about, hey, how poor I did that night or whatever, you know, just spit it out.
Somebody else may have already asked the question and you know the answer, so.
That's correct, yeah.
I had a question that I forgot about, when did the big L come into communication and existence? I mean, referring back to some of these cases were, came on board in two thousand and six and two thousand and seven. When did that big L come into communication?
I don't know, to be honest with you.
It's been a while.
Yes, right now, uh, to tell you, to, a little bit of quickness here on the background, is now we are finally moving into subdivisions and all that. We're just about done with all the plating that happened back in the early two thousands and late nineteen ninety-nine and all. Uh, so, there's still some out there, but, you know, when we were, I, I can remember Mr. Hendershot would say, oh yeah, you know, new subject, well, it's not, it was just.
Not new.
Right, but we are at new ones now, so, that's a good sign for the community. But to answer your question, I don't know, but we'll, I'll find out.
I'm just, I mean, that, that big L's been around for a while.
Sure.
I mean, and, and it may have sold off, but.
Yeah, I don't know.
That's not new.
No, no.
That's my point.
Oh, I see, yeah, and that's why I was saying, you know, that we're now getting through some of that other.
It's not, I mean, anybody that's bought up there should've been.
Aware.
Aware, that's not new, that big L's been around for a long time.
Yeah, so, and well, the, in generality, um, usually, I would've thought that we would've had more public comment on the, uh, school when it came around, you know, but, so. All right, well, thank you all, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Common answer, things, let me know.
Thanks.
Nobody did.
I said motion to adjourn, second.
We have a motion, and it's been seconded to adjourn the meeting, start the voting in the left.
Aye.
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 Motion passes eight zero.